We'll call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Viera.
Come here.
Here, Peter, Rita. Here, Abson, Donahue, here. Uh, here, Peter, Pauling. Pauling, Abson, Fairwell. Fairwell, here, Osling. Osling, Abson, Thompson.
Thompson.
Thompson, here, Carr.
Here.
Carr, here, Pittman.
Here.
Pittman, here, Slattery.
Here.
Uh, here, Fulos.
Here.
Fulos, here, Johnson.
Here.
Johnson, here, Prostha.
Here.
Prostha, here, Valado.
Here.
Valado, here, eleven present.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to next presentation of general proceedings. I need a motion to approve the City Council minutes for the date of June the twenty-seventh, twenty-seventeen. Do you have a motion? Motion, Alden Viera, second Alden Dexter Johnson. Any questions? Roll call.
Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Fairwell.
Aye.
Fairwell, aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Fulos.
Aye.
Fulos, aye, Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye, Prostha.
Aye.
Prostha, aye, Valado.
I'm looking for a mistake that I caught. You caught it already?
I did, thank you.
Then I...
Eleven ayes, sir.
Thank you very much. Council?
Good evening. You are all welcome as observers to tonight's meeting. Due our reminder that the purpose of meetings for the deliberation of the City Council and the mayor regarding city governance and governance, if you intend to speak, please once recognized by the mayor, approach the podium, announce any address, please be heard at five. Comments may be limited to three minutes or according to the appropriate city personnel for a follow-up.
Thank you. Anyone? Let me get a... And then your... Your sir, Stone. Yes, Stone, and then yourself. Thank you.
Marshall Stone, one-two-seven-six-one Sacramento. Mayor, I just have a couple of questions around the distribution of the nine-one-one center. Are the dispatchers in Oregon going to be trained as to the layout of the city and that type of thing so they know where to dispatch?
Yes.
Are... Are they gonna come and...
They are. We're gonna make the plans so they can come and record. In fact, one of the ideas is that, since our dispatchers are going that way, that they may be the ones who initially be training, not only themselves, but also the ones in displays of the layout. But we will get whatever plan is necessary to get them over here to know our streets.
All right, thank you. One other question.
Yes.
Have you... Have you gotten the grant, the grants funding?
We do have...
There's so many...
We do have... We do have some of the funding, and we're starting to use that.
Particularly one-twenty-six hundred block of Bear of Elm. There's one on the west side of the street.
We'll make a notation. Make a notation.
Okay, thank you.
Let me get the gentleman over here. From the Association. Your name and address.
Good evening. Dr. Miller, one-two-three-thirty-one Middle Lane, on behalf of the Fairways of Blue Island Homeowners Association. I have two letters that I'd like to read on behalf of the Association. Do I have your permission?
Yes, sir.
Greetings, Mayor Vargas and City Council. Uh, let me first begin by thanking Michael Miller, which is myself, for reading the letter. Due to a health issue, I am unable to attend today's meeting. My name is Nicole Middleton, and I reside in one-two-four-fifteen Middle Lane, unit four, at the Fairways. I am the original and only homeowner to reside here. Before moving to the Fairways, I resided in nineteen-twenty-four West Colonel Canal Street in Blue Island. As you can tell, I love my city of Blue Island. I believe Blue Island is a safe place to live and raise kids, too. I raised my son here, and he's on his way to college in the fall. Over the sixteen years of me residing at the Fairways, my living room windows have been broken several times. Years ago, I had to start a tradition. When I arrived home from work, instead of driving to my garage, I now drive to the front of my home to see if any windows have been hit with a golf ball. Mr. Mayor, I am a terrific citizen. I pay my property taxes to the city faithfully, but for services I don't utilize. My twenty-sixteen first installment property tax bill was due by March first, twenty-seventeen. Uh, she paid twenty-five-hundred. She goes on and on. Uh, basically, what she's saying is, uh, the last time we called upon the Blue Island by the emergency number at seven-oh-eight-three-five-thirteen-thirteen, a police officer is always dispatched to my home. She's an educator. Uh, she thinks that the police department, uh, Blue Island does an excellent job, uh, but she's very discouraged that the city and in particular you, Mayor Vargas, has done nothing to respond to any of our requests. Dear Mayor Vargas, the citizens of Fairways of Blue Island have requested that I write this letter on their behalf. This is from the Fairways of Blue Island Homeowners Association at large. We have a unique problem, and we need the support of the City Council. But in order to get that support, we need to share our problem. As the Fairways was developed back in the year two thousand, under the previous administration, we were given an opportunity to be reimbursed for golf ball damage to our windows or siding along the buildings in our complex. While the previous mayor agreed to this reimbursement with, on behalf of the City Council, with the legal department, uh, we did not abuse this privilege, nor did we use all of the funds allocated to the project. Although the administration has changed, we, as Blue Island citizens, continue to pay our taxes, follow the rules, and remain thoughtful and considerate citizens. Those things were not contingent upon working with the previous administration. During twenty-fifteen and twenty-sixteen, we have repeatedly attempted to reach you, Mayor Vargas, to discuss the problem, which is unique to the citizens residing in the Fairways. We had one meeting with you at the golf course clubhouse, and we are still awaiting your confirmation of support in addition to this response to our many, uh, emails to you and your office. Most recently, you came out, you and your assistant and your alderman. They came to visit our residence and assured us that you will address and resolve this issue. We believed you, and we voted for you. Now we are reaching out to you to support our community. We're sick and tired of another response. We need you to set up a plan, as the previous administration did, to take care of the damage that's caused by the golfers at the Meadows Golf Club. I have two copies of this letter to be submitted for your records, uh, just like to say, where are they with him? We don't know what to do, or we don't get a response.
Well, let me put it this way. I know the City Attorney, myself, which was a long ago, we sat there...
We sat there for an hour, waiting for someone from the Association to show up to the second meeting that was scheduled subsequent to the first meeting.
Is that your only answer? I've got a copy of emails here where your offices never respond. Okay, let me read. Tuesday, November fifteenth, no response. You want the time?
I don't need the time, sir.
Okay, let me read another one.
What the city's response was at the first meeting.
You're talking about one meeting when you did not really let us know that you were gonna be there.
Yes, we did.
You didn't... You didn't let my office. So I won't argue with you, but I have it in writing where you have not responded.
We discussed the city's position regarding golf ball damage.
September sixteenth. Three-twenty-two PM, no response.
Ma'am?
September twenty-ninth, twenty-sixteen, no response. November fifteenth, twenty-sixteen, no response. You're alluding to one incident, ma'am.
You want us to respond to something we have already provided a response to.
I haven't received a response. Where's the response?
The position has not changed since we met at that meeting originally with both homeowners associations present.
I represent Fairways of Blue Island.
So the position is the same.
With... I represent Fairways of Blue Island where the damage is still occurring. We just wanna know, what are you gonna do?
It's not the city's responsibility to be accountable for the actions of third parties. You accepted the risk of golf ball damage when you moved onto a golf course. It is not the city's responsibility to accept damage caused by third parties that are unidentifiable. It was agreed upon at the meeting that if the police comes out and investigates, which they will come when they're called, if they're able to identify the person responsible for creating the damage, we will take all necessary steps to make sure that that person is held accountable.
Ma'am?
And if... If it is unable to be determined who is the responsible party, we have reconfigured the golf course. We have looked at moving the holes to try to account for homes that are at the edge of the golf course where fly balls can go. And at the end of the day, we still have come to the same conclusion that you were advised of when we met the last time.
May I speak?
You got two minutes.
Okay. Uh, you're advised, okay, that the previous administration realized the problems. Okay, it is our opinion, based on living there since the year two thousand, that the solution is to take some of the profits from the Meadows Golf Club, like the previous administration did, in the amount of twenty-five-hundred dollars, which is not a lot of money. We should not stand here forever. It's an insult.
Yes, it is.
That's true.
It is an insult. We had one meeting with the previous administration. The problem was addressed. Don't know what's your attitude. It's disgusting.
It's not an attitude, sir. It's the position that...
No, it's an attitude. You're... You're pretty much talking about...
Sir, let her speak.
It has nothing to do with an attitude. We have looked at this. We have met. We have looked at this multiple times in multiple departments. We have got the police department to make sure that someone goes out every time there's an incident to get a report, to get it documented, and we have looked at this. It has nothing to do with an attitude, one way or the other. This is the reality of the situation of a whole...
It is not the reality. Wait a minute. It's your reality. It is not the reality.
It's not the reality. You cannot reside on a golf course. It is the reality of a whole...
Why can't you... Why can't you accept the fact that the previous administration dealt with it in a different format?
And that is...
And that is the reality. You choose not to do anything about it.
They did deal with it in a different format, and that's a different administration.
Right. Okay, let's deal with that part. Why...
Uh-huh.
Why can't you do what the previous administration did?
We'll set up a meeting, and we'll put it everything out. Is that okay? We'll set up a meeting tonight.
Well, if you tell us about the meetings, I don't wanna go through this again. I don't wanna let it soak from your legal department.
I have my calendar here. Once the meeting's over, this meeting, we will set a date.
Okay, it's just that simple. We're reasonable people, but we will not say being insulted by your administration.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Michael Wilson. I don't live in Blue Island now. I live in Chicago. I have businesses in Blue Island. I've spoken with Dexter Johnson and the mayor. I want to bring some businesses also to Blue Island. We also have a program that, um, we are paying, that started in the city of Chicago. Once I started, one with our new document where we took the young men that are in different gangs, and we brought them together, and we taught them how to do construction. That's working out real good, a hundred and seventy-five guys. We're not asking for any money from the city. We're asking, we have another program that we're asking the businesses to actually employ some other young men and women. They don't have to pay them. We would actually pay them, ten dollars and fifty cents an hour for it. But the thing is, what we're trying to do is stop a lot of violence and be able to try to help not just one city, but the state of Illinois, to try to raise some things together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? I'll just need your name and address.
Nick Simpson, twenty-two forty-seven Prairie Street. Um, I'm sorry that this is kind of subtle business, but I was out of town for the last City Council meeting. I'm slightly frustrated with how the garbage rollout was deployed. Um, got the alert from Cora Red on Saturday saying new garbage cans, whatever. I'm like, why is this going out on the emergency alert? But whatever. So then I get the second alert on the Monday, or another one about the garbage cans. But meanwhile, I was actually out of town, and so I'm frustrated because basically there was like three or four days, and, oh, by the way, here's your new garbage cans on your front lawn. And I get why they were put on the front lawn, but I didn't have an opportunity. And nothing screams, break into my house, like garbage cans have been sitting there for three or four days because I didn't have a chance to bring them back or make arrangements. So I guess in the future, please give us a little bit more lead time besides a few days to make arrangements for those sorts of things because there are other circumstances like this. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Greg Lockout, one-twenty-nine-fifteen Elm Street.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask if we could vote to approve cruise night for the summer on York Street, beginning this coming Monday, July seventeenth. I sent a written notice to Randy, but I believe I didn't get it in on time. I wasn't aware of the deadlines. So I'd like to ask if you could simply approve cruise night.
From what time to what time?
Uh, it would be July seventeenth, probably the end of September, and from about five to eight PM. And it'll be on York Street from Western to Gregory. Great way to promote Blue Island.
So from five PM to eight, every Monday, then?
Yes.
Starting...
Except for Labor Day.
Okay. I have... I have a letter here. It says, "Dear Randy, the chamber would like to request permission from the City Council to hold weekly cruise nights this summer to draw residents and visitors to our uptown shopping district. We plan to close York Street between Western and Gregory from five PM to eight PM on Monday evenings during the months of July, August, September, beginning July the seventeenth. We'd also like to hold one or two on Old Western if allowed." We will coordinate with public boards and police departments. Cecily, Greg Lockout, Executive Director, Department of Area Chamber of Commerce and Industry. That's it, right? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now move on to the next, uh, business. Mayor's announcements, report of city officials, presentations, and resolutions. We did get a... I did receive a letter from IDA. Um, all construction will start up again. As you see, Broadway Street, they've started again. So thank you that the state finally reached the budget, and all projects, uh, road projects in and around Blue Island, whether they're in progress now or in the future, will gear up and continue going in the future. And we'd like to thank the everybody in Springfield for that. Any bids?
No bids, sir.
Uh, city clerk's business? Oh, you know what? Let me do this before I forget it. I need a motion to approve the, uh, maybe a consensus for the cruise nights, and then we'll draw it up officially at the next City Council meeting, to allow cruise nights every Monday, again, on York Street between Western and Gregory, from five PM to eight PM, starting this coming Monday. And from my understanding, this coming Monday would be the Roman Chariots, the local car club would host that one. Do you have a consensus?
I got a question.
Sure.
Um, I don't think we should do motions and take road calls. It's not on the agenda at all meetings, unless I'm incorrect.
It's a consensus.
It's not. It's not actually.
We don't have to do no road call then or anything like that, though?
It's a consensus.
Call a favor?
Aye.
Okay, go ahead.
I just am curious. I think it's a great event, but I am curious, do we know, I mean, is there additional cost that we incurred, so forth, uh, for the events?
For security?
Yeah.
That's... From that is the cost, at least, of the park climbers.
So they don't... We're not paying for it?
Well, that's the thing. That's what will probably be our... Our cost.
Do we know what that is?
We can kind of figure as to how it was last June.
Yeah. Okay, I just would like to know that, I guess, before we vote on this, probably.
You're not...
You're not gonna vote. You're just gonna take a consensus, and then you'll cover it for, like, the first one. I'm gonna present under city clerk's businesses, a block party consensus toward the last meeting. So we have to rat like that this evening, but... But this is not one.
Is there a consensus? Go ahead.
Do they need the insurance for, uh, for this? I know we had, uh...
No. No, we're not using the park, just the street. And the park district is already taking care of the park.
Okay. Does that answer your question? Okay. City clerk? So there is a consensus? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, I hope we voted out the next meeting.
What was required?
Go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. What was requested?
It was submitted, yeah, that's a letter here, July the seventh. Which was Friday. All right. City clerk?
The motion to approve requests are, by requests from the last meeting, probably approached, they had block party thirty-three fifty-two, as in July fourth, from ten AM until ten. The council approved this, and it's a consensus.
Okay, there are motions. Is there a motion? Motion, Alden Fairwall, second. Is there a second on this one? By Alden Dexter Johnson. Roll call.
Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Fairwell.
Aye.
Fairwell, aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Fulos.
Aye.
Fulos, aye, Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye, Prostha.
Aye.
Prostha, aye, Valado.
Aye.
Valado, aye, eleven ayes.
Thank you. Next.
I have a motion to approve a request from Valado, they have a block party twenty-one thirty, West Hundred Twenty-Second Street on August fourth, from ten AM until four PM.
You have a motion? Alden Viera, do you have a second? Alden Fulos, any questions? Roll call, please.
Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Fairwell.
Aye.
Fairwell, aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Fulos.
Aye.
Fulos, aye, Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye, Prostha.
Aye.
Prostha, aye, Valado.
Aye.
Valado, aye, eleven ayes.
Thank you. Next.
Any motion to approve a request from Kathy Gardner, they have a block party hundred-and-eighty, maybe eleven, you know, August fifth, starting at ten AM.
The motion, Alden, uh, Pittman, second Alden Carr. Any questions? Roll call.
There's no time for, uh...
It says ten AM to what?
It says in the application, can't go past ten.
Okay. All right. Roll call, please.
Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Fairwell.
Aye.
Fairwell, aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Fulos.
Aye.
Fulos, aye, Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye, Prostha.
Aye.
Prostha, aye, Valado.
Aye.
Valado, aye, eleven ayes.
Thank you. Next.
Last one, he has a motion to approve a request from Val, I'm here, they have a block party unheard again, unheard from second Hundred Twenty-Third Street on August nineteenth, probably called noon until ten AM.
That a motion, Alden Valado?
Yep.
Motion, do you have a second? Alden Fairwell, any questions? Roll call, please.
Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Fairwell.
Aye.
Fairwell, aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Pardon me?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thompson, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Pittman, aye, Pittman, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Fulos.
Aye.
Fulos, aye, Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye, Prostha.
Aye.
Prostha, aye, Valado.
Aye.
Valado, aye. Twelve ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
That'll be it.
City treasurer?
I'll report this time, your honor.
Thank you. City attorney?
I'll report.
Committee reports, committee development committee, any report? No? Just move on. Finance committee?
Mayor, I will be reporting for Chairman Jan Ossman from the Finance Committee. Meeting was held, called for on June twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen, seven PM. Members, Alden Harley, Alden Fairwell, Alden Thompson, Alden Viera, and Alden Ossman. Absent, Alden Prostha. Also present, Director John Reader, Deputy Finance Director Lori Brown, Mark Miller, Building Department, and Mr. Dillon from SMS. Public comments, no comments. Accounts payable. Discussion, Alden Harley question check, for planters on Western, uh, for planters on Western Avenue. Alden Fairwell asks to compare our report showing appropriation versus budget. Accounts payable for June twenty-ninth, seventeen, four hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Motion by Alden Fairwell, and second by Harley. Motion carried. I would like to put that in the form of a motion.
Got a motion, do you have a second? Alden Viera, any questions? Roll call, please.
Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Fairwell.
Aye.
Fairwell, aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Fulos.
Aye.
Fulos, aye, Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye, Prostha.
Aye.
Prostha, aye, Valado.
Aye.
Valado, aye, twelve ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
New business. Resolution for demolition of property at one-one-nine forty-one Benson's, the old Montel building, June sixteenth, twenty seventeen. City was awarded three hundred fifty-four thousand, nine hundred fifty-three dollars. For demolition, no matching funds required. Motion by Alden Thompson, and second by Harley. Motion carried. Motion to City Council. I would like to put that in the form of a motion.
Got a motion, do you have a second? Alden Valado, any questions? Roll call, please.
Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Fairwell.
Aye.
Fairwell, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Prosta.
Aye.
Prosta, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Twelve ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
Director John Reader requests one full-time police officer to be hired. This position is needed to increase manpower. Discussion. This position is appropriated, aye, would come from civil service list. Motion by Alderman Harley, second by Alderman Viera, motion carried. I would like to put this in the form of a motion.
No motion? Okay. From my stance, it's civil service hire, so we don't need a motion.
You don't need a motion, okay, well, thank you.
Okay.
Director Reader requests purchase of four new police vehicles. Money was appropriated. Financing to be discussed with CPA at next financial meeting on Saturday, 18/27. Motion to table by Alderman Thompson, and second by Alderman Fairwell. Motion to table, carry. The next item on the agenda was from the scrap metal services, and we have a representative, Mr. Dillon, here today. We're doing, come up with Dillon and say, before we take the motion, I go.
Good evening, uh, my name is David Dillon, I'm a lieutenant. I've been practicing in the real property taxation field for almost thirty years. I'm here on behalf of Scrap Metal Services, and we're here to ask you for something. What we're asking for is the ability to take advantage of a special property tax classification created by the Cook County Board about three years ago. What this classification does is it allows an existing business to take advantage of an incentive which has already been granted some thirty years ago to someone who's gonna start a new business or build a new building. This allows someone who is in the business, has an older building, and needs to repair and modify that building and make investments in the business. What it does is it creates a temporary sixty percent reduction in real estate taxes each year for ten years, and it's a smaller break in the eleventh and twelfth year, and it goes up to the full level of assessment for industrial property in Cook County, which is twenty-five percent. It is not renewable. Company we're referring to is Scrap Metal Services, and its property acquired in 2014 at 3,000 West 139th Street. This came about as a result of the previous scrap metals company in that location having a bankruptcy. SMS stepped in, worked with the bankruptcy trustee, the bankruptcy court, made an offer to acquire the real estate and all of the equipment, and immediately took control of the property, hired virtually everyone who had been employed at the former company for the one or two good line jobs. And they have been building this up bit by bit as quickly as they can. Property was under-maintained for many years. If you look at the book I have here, we have pictures of the project showing it's, uh, it's taken a lot of wear and tear. I'm going to ask Joelyn Gosser, the chief financial officer, to step up shortly and go through what they've done, what their business methods, what their business plan is. We have a letter here from Alderman, Bob Polk of Burnham. Fourth section of this document refers to how they become a part of the community there, and the various good things they've done to support the community and help those in need, and of course, they'll step up and do the same kind of things here. We also have in the fifth section a summary of articles pertaining to the scrap business and how tough it has been since the steel industry tanked in about nineteen, pardon, 2008, 2009. They're still being beaten up pretty badly by Chinese and other, other companies' imports, other countries' imports, which are being sold at below cost. So, the impetus, the cash flow we're seeking is badly needed. Joe, Joe Lynn will explain, they've already put seven-figure money into this property. The ability, they may plan to do more of that. To cut to the chase, as far as the tax calculations are concerned, I have a one-page summary on the inside jacket of the book. What we have is a tax bill currently for 2016 payable 2017, which bills an amount of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the whole year of 2016 payable 2017. Blue Island gets nine point eight-eight percent of that total amount, which amounts to thirteen thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars. That's nine point eight percent, as we said. If the Class 6B, which we're asking for, were to be granted, the taxes would become fifty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars. Blue Island's nine point eight-eight percent would be fifty-three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. So this would cost Blue Island seventy-nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars a year, or approximately seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. The ten-year tax on 6B, if it were reduced by way of this special emergency relief classification, they would pay five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. In the eleventh year, they'd pay eighty-one thousand, and twelfth year, a hundred and seven. So over the thirteen years, they would pay a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in taxes. If, however, you apply a three percent average inflation factor in the taxes, which is not unreasonable because the rates continue to go up, values continue to go up, they would pay a total over that period of time of eight hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars in property taxes. Even without the inflation factor, it would be seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. So we're asking for that relief. We have all kinds of information for you here, but we don't want to overwhelm you. I'd ask that Joelyn be given a few minutes to explain their business model and how they operate, and clarify a lot of things for you.
I just need your name and your position.
Uh, my name is Joelyn Gosser, and I'm the chief financial officer of Scrap Metal Services. I, I've been employed there for about nine years. We are headquartered in Burnham, Illinois, which is pretty close by here. SMS has been a company that really has established their long-term relationships with the communities that they operate in, we believe, and hiring from those communities. We're a whole-service scrap processing recycling company, as I said, with headquarters in Burnham, Illinois, which is in Cook County, also, in about fifteen minute drive from here. We're a privately owned company, our owners are Jeff and Red Gurler. Uh, they were former principals in a scrap company. They sold out, and then they restarted themselves back up in 2005. Since 2005, our company has grown both nationally and internationally. We have approximately six hundred and fifty employees. We are committed to this area, so when the property became available in Blue Island, we were really excited that we were able to purchase that out of receivership. We currently have a hundred and thirty-four employees that work in Cook County. Twenty-seven of those work in the Blue Island facility. We've doubled the number of employees at that plant since we took over in 2014. Of the twenty-seven that work in Blue Island, seventy percent actually live in Blue Island or the surrounding Cook County area. So we are always actively looking for employees in, in the area that we, um, have our facilities. Uh, our operations there are that we collect scrap metal. So we collect both ferrous and non-ferrous materials, so metallic and non-metallic material. We buy from the public, and we buy from, you know, industrial accounts. We then process the scrap, and we ship it to, you know, manufacturers and steel mills. We have a small shredder there, and then we also have a heavy media plant that uses an environmentally friendly, soluble liquid system to separate metals. Scrap mill is really a very highly competitive business. It's very much commodity-based. Uh, in 2009, we hit the recession, it was, it was tough. It was even tougher in 2015 and 2016. Our industry had over a hundred bankruptcies in the first two years. As I said, we bought metal recycling systems in Blue Island out of a receivership. We hired the employees, we started to invest into that, that facility. Because the prior owner didn't have any actual liquid cash, some of the maintenance and things kind of went by the wayside, but since that time, I think I've stated this, all the former employees were offered positions there, and most of them did take jobs, some of them are still there. We've re-engaged the customers in that area, and in addition, we've solicited new customers. We've had to evaluate the equipment and the building there, and knew that there was going to be some significant repairs. To date, we've spent one point three million dollars in that facility. We've some, made some major repairs, we've upgraded the equipment, and brought in some additional equipment. This month alone, we are investing another seven hundred thousand dollars in that facility, upgrading our shredder. We are also looking at possibly upgrading our heavy media plant. Uh, in closing, I'd like to say, as you can see from our, our letter from Mayor Polk, you know, we are, we are good, uh, community citizens, and, uh, we're hoping that you'll be able to assist us in our request.
I have spoken to, uh, Mayor Polk from Burnham. Uh, the same thing that you are doing in that community, we would want that and more.
Okay.
In this community. Uh, are there questions from the Alderman?
Yes.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, ma'am, thank you, sir, for coming out. So in your, um, this, the initial handout here, um, it says, if the property's reclassified to Class 6B, where no changes being made to either the value of the property or the tax rate, um, the amount billed, and we have the amount here. What, what have you guys currently applied for, and what do you plan on applying for with the Cook County Assessor to appeal your property value and the assessments on the property?
What we're doing is putting ourselves in a position to apply for a Class 6B for the assessor. The thing that permits that is an enabling resolution from the village or city in which the property is located, and that's why we've come to you to explain what it is we're trying to do, and what we propose to do with the increment in cash flow we're trying to generate.
Great, thank you, uh, thank you for the answer, but what have you, what have you applied for to appeal your assessed value and the property value with the Cook County Assessor that would lower this rate even further? Not regarding the Class 6B that's gonna affect your tax bill. What has been applied for in the past, and what do you plan on applying for in the future?
We applied one year ago for a reduction in fair market value based upon the price we paid for the property, and an appraisal by an MAI appraiser, which, as you may know, is, um, the top shelf in terms of appraiser qualifications. And that appraisal was based significantly on comparable sales of property in this area.
Thank you. Do you have any plans for, for future deals in the next six months? I know assessments should sum up everybody.
We don't know, because we don't have our new, uh, we don't have our new valuation yet.
Okay, uh, then I have another question. On page two, on tab two, um, you guys gave a nice breakdown of the buildings and kind of the poor condition they are, but then, when you say what you're gonna use this, this Class 6B property tax classification, what you would use with the savings from it, it would be to maintain production, flooding the Blue Island, and purchase and install additional scrap shredding machines. Nothing about fixing up the appearance of the building, and I know you provided some nice pictures, but it shows the flooding, the problems with the walls, damaged walls, more flooding and damaged concrete. And you mentioned you had issues, and then you say you can use the savings not to fix the appearance of your property. So you're still gonna have a really ugly-looking property, but you're gonna use the money to build your business to, to scrap more metal and do other things instead.
Well, it's a shortcoming on my part.
Yeah, I, I would say at this point, some of the flooding has been addressed. We've leveled some of the property where there were some issues. Um, we, we understand that there are some, some issues with the external part of the building. If you've been there recently, you'll see that there were some cushions removed, there was some sidewalks put in. There is some more cosmetic things, none of that is structural, but you're correct, there is some more cosmetic things that need to be corrected.
Thank you, ma'am. One more question here. Um, you get, your company's been in Blue Island, your, your company has owned this property in Blue Island since 2013?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. So in the three years you've been here, you haven't partnered with the city on anything? You haven't donated to back-to-school events, to my knowledge, to schools? But now that you're wanting this, this tax break, it's, this is what we do with Burnham, this is what we do with all these people, so do you give us this, this break, we're gonna come do all this stuff? But you didn't partner with us for the prior three years, you're correct.
I, I would say you're right, we did not create a relationship with the, the city. That is correct, but we are prepared to do that out of our own capabilities.
I guess I have one more question. How much do you pay your employees an hour?
So they range anywhere from twelve dollars to twenty-five dollars an hour, depending on what their job classification is, but twelve is the minimum.
Awesome, all right, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions from the Alderman? Go ahead, Alderman.
We, I was on the, I'm on the committee where this was presented last, a couple weeks ago, and, uh, first I want to, you know, compliment Mr. Dillon and his company, they made a very thorough presentation. Uh, we engaged in kind of a lengthy discussion, and he provided, uh, direct and clear answers to all of our questions, and I very much appreciate that. And also, having been on plan commission for a number of years, I very much support, uh, business in Blue Island and finding good business here. Uh, nevertheless, I voted against this in committee, and I will vote against it tonight, uh, for a couple reasons. First off, what Alderman, uh, Donahue just asked, um, about any kind of commitment that could be made to the city about, you know, how we might benefit as a result of granting this relief, uh, you know, and again, I'm not criticizing, but I'm just saying, there was no, uh, there was no commitment made. We, we talked about, uh, the fact that there are actually, out of the thirty-five employees that are currently there, three are living in Blue Island. And I particularly requested if there could be a commitment for new hires to hire from Blue Island, uh, and they said they just couldn't do that, that they couldn't make that promise. Uh, they would look, but they couldn't make the promise. Uh, again, in terms of the, the involvement they've had with the city to date, I guess it's been milled, uh, and now they're asking for relief. The, uh, other thing that I want to do is just read into the record an article on the subject of tax breaks that are given to industry, and, um, you know, why they're not always the best thing, if I could just have a minute to do that. This is from City Lab, uh, it's a well-recognized, uh, group of experts in the, uh, kind of city planning world, and the article is titled "Handing Out Tax Breaks to Businesses is Worse Than Useless." It's, uh, published March 7th, uh, 2017. I just read a couple little quick excerpts from it, uh, that call into question the value to not only the city, but frankly, to the business of, of these tax incentives. The article says that incentives do not vary in light, excuse me, incentives do not vary in light of the industry characteristics that would predict greater local benefits, obvious ones, like how much R and D they do, how many people they employ, or wages they pay. So there's really very little, uh, weight given to what the benefits would be, or what kind of, uh, industry is being given benefits. The study concludes that there is little connection between the level of incentives a state forks over to businesses and its economic fortunes. A 2002 study of some three hundred and fifty companies that received incentives found a negative effect on their ability to create jobs. Companies that received incentives expanded more slowly than others, and the overall effect of incentives was a reduction of ten-point jobs per establishment. The broad body of evidence on incentives finds that incentives do not actually cause companies to choose certain locations over others, rather, companies typically select locations based on factors such as workforce, proximity to markets, and access to qualified suppliers, and then pick jurisdictions against one another to extract tax benefits and other incentives. I don't see the benefit, frankly, to Blue Island, uh, of this incentive, other than the possibility that we could lose the business, I don't, they seem to be doing pretty well. They made a million dollars last year, and congratulations to them, I think it's a great thing. They, they came from a position of buying a company that was in bankruptcy. Obviously, they got a pretty good price for it. Um, they had some, a small loss in the first year or two, and they built a profitable business over time, so I think we'll congratulate them, and we certainly do want to support the business in every we can. Blue Island really needs revenue, we don't need to be giving it up, we can't repair our streets. We need to keep this money here.
Be Irish clown to that.
Just one second, there's another question. Alderman, go ahead.
Yes, um, what is the hours of your operation?
We are currently working, I believe it is seven to four or five, and we're getting ready to add on a second shift.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry, I'm, my name is Alderman Dexter Johnson, and I live right across the street from you guys, been there since sixty-eight. Um, do you hire people with thuggies?
No, we do not.
Okay. Uh, are you willing to give back to the community as, uh, Alderman Donahue pointed out about what you do in Burnham?
Yes, yes, we are.
Okay, so can we have that in specifics per se, much as we be here? I have no problem with actually giving you the 6B.
Can I, can I, can I just say, my name's, uh, Jeff Gurtler, I'm the chief executive officer of Scrap Metal Services, and I would love to sit down with the committee and the administration to talk about how we can help the community. We haven't yet had a committee to do that, and I would be open for that whenever your calendars.
Okay, this is Alderman Prosta, who's also the Alderman down in that area, and we have had companies close down there. We also had Acne Refinery, which was another scrap metal. And I'm a scrapper, so I understand the nature of the business, um, but also understand the nature of reciprocity. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
So my thing is, 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 as a community, as the public health and safety director, John Reader, there's a lot of things that we could utilize that you guys could probably bring to the table, as well as we. But also, you got Mr. Wilson right there that just offered paying employees ten dollars and fifty cents to, if it could help you buy your manpower, or upgrade your manpower, or upping the level of people working for you. It may be helpful. But I have no issue with that, and you guys got a scale over there, right?
Yes, it is.
So is it possible for our officers, if we had trucks that were overweight, to bring them in? Or overweight trucks?
Absolutely, yes.
That's it for my question.
Can I just address the, the incentives?
Go ahead.
Um, we have a similar operation, a little bit bigger, in the state of Indiana. And the state of Indiana, St. Joe County, gave us some, also some tax breaks, and we also got a tax-exempt bond in the state of Indiana. We have since taken the employee count there from fifteen to forty-five in that time. So when we're looking for assistance, we're looking to grow the business, to hire people, to grow within the community. That's, that's the reason that we're here, is we're trying to grow and employ people within the community.
Okay. Alderman, go ahead.
Did I understand you to say you had twenty-seven people from the city of Blue Island?
No, we have twenty-seven that are from the Cook County, I believe there's three that are from Blue Island.
Yes, in our meeting, it was only stated, three people from the city of Blue Island.
Twenty-seven people working, that were.
But they're not from the city of Blue Island.
No, I don't think, I don't, if that's what I said, I missed something.
Okay, thank you.
We have one other, city treasurer? Go ahead.
With all due respect to all the Alderman, and I appreciate a lot of good questions that have come out, especially from Mr. Donahue, and about the taxes and stuff, but I think that basically overall, we had our consultant expert, Mr. McKenna's office, and Mark, you can speak on behalf of this, is that the consultant basically evaluated the whole situation, and they, they give us an input on, a status of the whole picture. and they give us an input on the status of the whole picture. Because if I recall correctly, when you bring up the taxes and stuff, north of one hundred and thirty-ninth is TIF two, so there's a TIF involved, there's other factors involved that are hard to explain in just one statement of the gentleman just basically said. So it's not only what Blue Island loses or gains in the overall aspect of the taxes, because in the way I understand it, we have more to gain. The other subject was that there were some issues, as Alderman Prosser brought up in the past, with the traffic flow on one hundred and thirty-fifth, I think it was. So those issues were, I think, were brought up at the committee, and I apologize, I couldn't be at the Finance Committee meeting at that time, but those were all discussed, the employment issue was discussed, okay? And there's certain legal things about that, basically, we can suggest, we can recommend, we can take their honesty and their working relationship, that they will give us Blue Islanders a preference for appointment, but the main issue is how it benefits Blue Island in the long run, like the gentleman tried to explain. And Mr. McKenna, I have to take, he's the expert of TIFs, overall assessments for our business, and whenever we get to the Six Bs and all these different types of discounts, we can take their consultant as an expert, and we have to take that as an advisor, besides our own personal information. That's all I have to say. Thank you. And Mark, if you want to say anything about Mr. McKenna's?
They just stay supportive of the proposal.
Okay, so.
Any other questions? Alderman Thompson?
Yes, may I continue then?
Yes, sir.
Roll call vote taken. Alderman Fernwall, no. Alderman Holly, yes. Alderman Vera, yes. Alderman Thompson, no. Austin, yes. Motion carried. Now, why to put this in form of a motion and there's no?
There's a motion, there's a second, Alderman Vera. Again, we've gone through the questions. Your motion's to put it out, right?
Yes, to, a motion, yeah, to approve.
Motion to approve?
Yes.
Yes. Second, Alderman Vera.
Because we approved it.
No questions, we've discussed that. Roll call, please.
Vera.
Aye.
Vera, aye. Vera. Vera, aye. Donahue?
No.
Donahue, no. Fernwall?
No.
Fernwall, no. Thompson?
No.
Thompson, no. Carr?
No.
Carr, no. Pittman?
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery?
No.
Slattery, no. Pulos?
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Prostho?
Aye.
Prostho, aye. Alado?
Mr. Count.
Five no's.
How many ayes?
Six.
Six.
One, six.
Five no's? No.
Yes, who does it?
Aye.
Vera Vergis?
Aye.
Vera Vergis, aye.
It's the first time in four years that I've.
That's what I said, give you a chance there, man.
Thank you very much. All right, any other business, Alderman? Yes, go ahead.
Alderman Holly announced representative from Art Space coming to Blue Island. This is the first stage of evaluating possible development for a plan. Art Space is a nonprofit organization that uses the tools of real estate development to create affordable and perfect places where artists can live and work. Adjournment, adjournment by law, and second by the arrow. Motion carried. Next funding committee meeting will be held Tuesday, July eighteenth at seven p.m. Eastern.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Public Health and Safety Committee?
Our meeting was held tonight, so the minutes from that will be at our next meeting.
That's fine.
However, I do have a resolution authorizing execution of intergovernmental agreement by in between the city of Blue Island and the Hornland Fire Protection District for the provisions of emergency response communications and dispatching services. I put that in form of a motion.
We got a motion, do we have a second? By Alderman Pulos, any questions? Roll call, please.
Vera?
Aye.
Vera, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Fernwall?
Aye.
Fernwall, aye. Thompson?
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman?
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos?
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Prostho?
Aye.
Prostho, aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Okay, and then we also have an ordinance of the city of Blue Island, Illinois, dissolving the city's emergency telephone system board. I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? By Alderman Pulos, any questions? Roll call, please.
Vera?
Aye.
Vera, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Fernwall?
Aye.
Fernwall, aye. Thompson?
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr?
Carr.
Carr, aye. Pittman?
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos?
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Prostho?
Aye.
Prostho, aye. Alado?
Aye.
Alado, aye.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Alderman?
Oh, I'm sorry. Our next meeting will be held August eighth at six p.m. in East Danex.
Thank you very much. Any Aldermanic announcements or comments? Go ahead, Alderman.
Bethel Panacostal Church is going to be holding their Kid Community Day on July the fifteenth. I believe it's from ten until two, so that's a nice family event. Everybody's invited to come out. And National Night Out is coming up August the first, that's the first Tuesday of August. We hope to see everybody up and celebrating, celebrating the night with a big parade at the North Fair Court.
Thank you. Anyone else? Matt, I need a motion. Alderman, go ahead.
May I would like to address the city council members and those people who are in your ward, giving parties. The cutoff time is ten o'clock, is that right? The city organ?
Yeah, ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.